than ever. So far, just in the last three months, in the city of Lakewood alone, we've seen over 37,000 visits across our 11 local pantries. And we are expecting it to get much, much worse. We've done about 240,000 meals, or pounds of food got distributed last year. And we're already on track to be double the amount of people that needed to be served since 2019. And May, for those who don't know, is actually Hunger Awareness Month, which is why this is the most appropriate time. Because we're preparing for kids to get out of school. And once they don't have those free and reduced lunches anymore, we know that there's going to be a wave that hits us. And combine that with what we're seeing in grocery prices, we're gearing up. And we're looking now to the stage of filling that warehouse full of food. So thank you for allowing us to be prepared. Thank you for allowing us to be in position to weather whatever comes, to be ready in place for whatever our community is going to need moving forward. And I don't want all of that to discourage anyone. If anything, I really would hope people get pumped up. Because there's a lot that we can do and are going to be doing in the future to make sure that our community has enough food. So thank you all so much for just your support.
Next on our agenda is the recognition of Ellie Wilson for her service to Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. And Ellie, if you would want to join me at the podium.
Pretty good.
It was wonderful to recognize one of the champions of many things Lakewood in our own Ellie Wilson. And I have some notes from one of her biggest fans, Andy Gurnon here, that I'll read a few of. But I just want to also recognize members of Lakewood's Promise who are here tonight. I know we have one of our initial council members, Ann Kirk Davis, who was instrumental in doing so much of this work. Again, we stand on the shoulders of those who have come before us. We've got Joyce Love Day here from Clover Park Technical College. Matthew Link, is that correct? Kim, for Julie at Pierce College. So there's much love around for you, Ellie Wilson, and for all of the incredible work you have done over the years. So I'm just going to read a few of the comments of Ellie's background and provide a little loving sunshine on all of your accomplishments. And we'll give you a chance to actually say something. So that'll be good. Just two words, exactly. Ellie Wilson has spent over 35 years as a committed and effective volunteer here in the Lakewood community. Ellie doesn't speak or seek the spotlight, but instead, her quiet dedication has served the schools, the children, and numerous local nonprofits. Ellie was a wife to Jean, a career military officer who passed away in 2016, and mother to three children, all graduates of Lakes High School. She's a friend and colleague to many Lakewood residents and has volunteered timelessly to this community. As Ellie's children transitioned to middle school, so did Ellie. She became the PTSA Legislative Representative, Treasurer, and President of the PTA at Hutloch. One of her highlights was tutoring eight students phonics and reading to seventh graders, bringing each one to grade level by year's end. At Lakes High School, Ellie established the PTSA newsletter, chaired the Volunteer and Hospitality Committee, established College Night along with another mom from Clover Park High School for juniors and seniors at both high schools to meet with alumni, to learn about adapting to college life. And through these years, she lobbied for various children's issues. In 1988, she was asked to revive the Lakewood Citizens Campaign and Committee for Schools, serving as Chair or Co-Chair for nine years, where she ran seven levy campaigns and two bond campaigns for the Clover Park School District. In 1991, Communities and Schools of Lakewood was founded, even before Cityhood. Ellie was one of a handful of Lakewood citizens that helped establish this local nonprofit. Through the years, she has served as Chair, Public Relations Committee, Fundraising Co-Chair, Finance Committee Chair, Advisory Chair to the Board, and she even served as Interim Executive Director for eight months. Of course, the board tried to pay Ellie for her time as she turned around and donated any monies back to community and schools here in Lakewood. In 1994-95, Ellie served as Campaign Advisor to Co-Chairs Bill Harrison and Andy Gurnon, leading to the successful incorporation of the city of Lakewood. In 1996, Lakewood's Promise and Human Services Collaboration was established. Ellie was one of the founders. She served on the Leadership Team Strategic Planning Committee, the Caring Adult Task Force as Chair for many years, and is currently on the Promise Advisory Board for the City Council. Ellie's home has hosted foreign exchange students through the years. She's a member of Christ Lutheran Church. Of course, she taught Sunday School to students there. And during her 25 years as an Army Wife, she was mother of the Officers, a member, rather, of the Officers' Wives Club, probably mother as well, serving in many capacities: President, Newsletter, Editor, and worked on The Christmas Bazaar and The Thrift Shop. Her recent project with Habitat for Humanity is where she co-chaired with Andy Gurnon the successful effort to raise over $200,000 for building the legacy Claudia Thomas House in our own Tlican neighborhood, where a recent wall-raising event was held on Saturday, August 26, 2023, and where we're going to have a presentation on June 1 and a dedication with the two families welcomed to this new home. So on behalf, Ellie, of the Lakewood City Council, we're going to present you a certificate of recognition for your service to the Lakewood Promise Advisory Board since its inception. And we just want to say, thank you, good and faithful servant, for an incredible job well done. I'll give you the floor to say your two sentences you said. And then I'll grab the certificate and we'll have a nice photograph. But thank you again for all you've done for us and for all the students.
My pleasure. You know, it takes a village, takes a village. And we had a lot of people on our village. Before I go any further, I thought I'd give you a little bit of history about the Promise Advisory Board, because that is my last board that I'll be serving on here, probably, in Lakewood. And there's a lot of history with this board. And many of you probably know some of the history, but maybe not all of it. And those of you who are new, I think this would be beneficial into understanding a little bit more about what happens in the city of Lakewood. Lakewood's Promise actually came into existence in 1998 under the National Banner of America's Promise, the Alliance for Youth. And that was established by General Colin Powell. He was a leader and he was the founding Chair of the Promise Alliance for Youth back in Washington DC, along with five other presidents at that time. This was an opportune moment for us to create new partnerships in various organizations and service providers here in Lakewood, especially since our Lakewood was just at its beginning stages, a very new city. Initially, those people who became a partner, those groups, included the Clover Park School District, St. Clair Hospital, Fort Lewis, McCord Air Force Base, Faith Communities, the Chamber of Commerce, and our several service clubs. By 2002, Lakewood was selected as one of the 13 pilot demonstration sites for America's Promise. We had such great leaders at that time, at the beginning of our city. And we were so well organized that we became a star on the national stage. Since then, our little red wagon, which is what I'm wearing on my lapel, and it's our national logo, that little logo has traveled from East Coast to West Coast and all the states in between. A lot of the movement that was initiated by General Colin Powell has been accepted in a lot of states in our country, Washington being one of them. The five promises, which are the heart of the movement, are what is known, what are known as these issues. Number one, relationships with the caring adult for every child. Number two, safe places for our youth, where there are structured activities. Number three, a healthy start, both health-wise, physically and mentally. Number four, marketable skills to leave here in the city of Lakewood and go wherever their journey takes them with marketable skills. And five, helping our students learn the opportunities and the sacrifices and the appreciation of giving back what they know, what they have learned, and what their skills are. Research and practice have shown that these five promises together prove to be very powerful in helping our children to grow and to become independent, responsible, and productive adults. We know that from our own experiences here. Our Promise Advisory Board has been actively engaged in bringing our community together in initiating ways in which to deliver these five promises in our community. Currently, our Youth Council is now preparing a youth summit, which will take place on Saturday, May 25. It has been a joy working with these young people. And I encourage you to take a look on the 25th of May. Stop by Harrison Prep is where it's going to be held. There will be a lot of activities taking place with our young people. It's astonishing, actually, how well organized they can be and what talents they have to share. None of these things that I have mentioned have been done by me, by myself. It has all been done with a partnership of many people. Andy Gurnon, Claudia Thomas, being the starters and the initiators of a lot of things that have happened in our city. As I said before, it takes a village to make things happen. It takes a village to raise children. And I think that the village that we have organized and that we have pulled together has been an excellent one. Being a member on this particular advisory board has been pure pleasure to work with people who are shakers and movers and who all have a passion for our youth and our children. And having the ability to share that passion and to encourage the different organizations, our service clubs, our school district, partnerships with the city, especially with our city council, the support that we have had on this advisory board has been absolutely wonderful. It's been a pleasure to be a member of the board. But as all good things are, it's also a time when you might say to yourself, it's time to step down and let the younger generation step in and take over with a lot of energy and new ideas. And so that's where I am today, to say thank you all for what you have given me, as well as what I have given you. Thank you.
Again, thanks for being part of our village, Ellie. We're going to present you with this certificate. Photograph here. Well, thank you all again for joining us for that nice honor for Ms. Wilson and certainly for EFN. We appreciate all of you being here tonight for that. Next is Public Comments, section of tonight's agenda. But before that, I'm going to call on the City Manager to provide an update on a recent issue of community importance, and that being the interlock and bridge closure and the pending maintenance identification and work. Mr. Caulfield.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I think as you're aware, this past Friday, the city was necessary to close the interlock and bridge to both all vehicular as well as pedestrian traffic. And up until about 4:30, 5 o'clock this afternoon, the closure was expected to remain in place indefinitely as we work through how best to proceed. However, let me start off with that we do have a plan that we can get the bridge reopened by September 30 of this year. But before I come to that, I would like to just provide some background about, you know, the condition of the bridge and where we are. And Mayor, I would like to start off with that this is a maintenance issue that does happen periodically on this bridge. This is not something that is new by any means. The closure is actually a follow-up to action that the city took earlier last week in reducing the traffic to one lane to limit the weight on the bridge. That restriction was in turn followed to initial weight limit restriction that we placed on the bridge the early part of this year in response to some identified compromised pile caps that we had discovered as part of the city's bridge inspection that occurs every two years, and that occurred back in 2023. Also, again, just want to point out that the city regularly inspects the bridge every two years, which is standard for a bridge of this size and scope. However, despite the weight limit reduction, as well as the one-lane closure, some vehicles over the allowed weight were still crossing the bridge. And the decision to close the bridge on Friday really is just one out of abundance of caution for public safety, because we just don't know what will happen. The full closure is the result of further analysis by a structural engineering firm hired by the city that had identified a high rate of deterioration among these wooden pile caps. And by the way, the pile caps is actually a wooden beam that stretches across the pilings that holds up the bridge. And there are 44 of them. And by the way, the bridge is really, it's not going anywhere. It'll take a seismic event for that bridge to come down, because those pilings, which are made of wood themselves, are really more like concrete in all the years that they've been in the water. But they are there, they're not, they're just not moving. So it's the pilings that are across, I'm sorry, these wooden beams, these pile caps that go across these pilings that then the bridge actually sits on. And also, again, this is not something that's new. Most recently, in 2012, one of those beams had been replaced, and three had been replaced in 2008. The bridge in its current configuration is well over 70 years. The bridge in its current status went through a major rehabilitation in the 1950s. We estimate, based on the condition of the bridge today, that it will last at least another 70 years. So it's really, again, it's not going anywhere. But the recent inspection of the bridge, you know, identified, you know, these deterioration issues. And again, there's 44 of them. And again, four were replaced in the last 10 or 12 years. And there was another, let me look at my numbers here. There was another two, it was another, I think, 12 or so that had been replaced, or maybe not that many, but there had been some previously replaced prior to that as well. But right now, our analysis has shown that there's a need to replace 17 of the 44 beams. And again, it's a maintenance issue. What they do is a contractor will come in and they'll jack it up and then just slide the old ones out and slide a new one in. Again, it's been done in the past. The, oh, here it is, yeah. A total of 12 of the 44 have already been replaced. So this will be another 17, so it'll bring it to 29 of the 44. But they've had a very long life, well over 70 years. Also, the crossings underneath the bridge, where there's areas where there's several of the pilings, cap pilings, we want to close that to boat traffic and kayak traffic. And again, just out of an abundance of caution, because we don't want folks to get hurt or anything. And that's still, actually, still under assessment at this point in time. In terms of who's going to do the work, in the past, Washdott has actually done this work. They have done bridge work. However, they are no longer doing it. At first, we thought that we would have some challenges hiring a contractor to do the work. But actually, today, we've actually got a call from a couple of contractors in this area that are interested in doing the work. So that's some good news. Also, from a permitting standpoint, since it is maintenance and since we're staying out of the water, even though we're over the water, we will have to go through permitting with the state agency, particularly with Fish and Wildlife. However, since it's maintenance, we will not have to go through permitting with the US Department Corps of Engineers, which alone could take over two years. So that's the good news. So the good news is that it's at the state, local level in terms of, in terms of the permitting. And as we're working through these options, I know we have put up some blockades to keep people off of the bridge, as well as vehicles. However, we are going to be further locking down the bridge. We're going to be putting up some temporary fencing, as well as some no parking signs along the residential roads that lead up to both sides of the bridge. And the reason being is because those areas are quite narrow. And, you know, the residents that live in that area need to have access to their property. So we don't want folks coming down there and parking and things along those lines. The reason I bring that up is because that actually occurred this weekend. But also, to ensure that emergency vehicles can get through there, the mail can get through there, the garbage truck can get through there, just regular business within those respective residential neighborhoods. So again, we're going to be putting up some no parking sign to address that. Also, just for some background information, the average traffic count along the bridge, and the latest count we have is from last year, is not quite 5,000 trips a day, which is, you know, about an arterial collector or so. For comparative purposes, if you imagine Angle Lane or View Drive or Lakewood Drive, Lakeview Drive, rather, those are kind of comparable roads. So a lot, but not a lot. And at one time, actually, prior to the pandemic in 2018, the traffic count measured almost 6,500 vehicles a day. So it actually dropped, has dropped off significantly since the COVID. In terms of solutions, we've identified three options. And the options in terms of price range from $450,000 upwards to over $800,000. The first option, and again, all three options can be completed between now and September 30. Do want to let you know that I've already given the direction to our Public Works Engineering Department to move forward with initiating the process. For example, there's a six-to-eight week lag on ordering the actual wooden beams. And so let's just go ahead and get those in the hopper. I know the council hasn't taken action, but I'd rather be proactive on it. We can always pull back for, you know, for some reason or another, if that's not something the council wants to move forward on or wants to consider some other options. But the three options, the first option, kind of the lowest value option, about $450,000, would replace the most serious compromised pile caps. There's eight of them. That's it. It would replace eight of them. However, we'll be back out at that bridge probably in three to four years, if not sooner, for the other nine. So that's option one, so that's kind of the quick and dirty one. But again, the timeline is still the same, all these options, timeline's the same. The second option would be to add two pile caps, so do 10 instead of eight, as well as there are wooden strings that go in the opposite direction of the pile caps that then the road asphalt sits on. And so there's 572 of those. And there are 19, or stringers is what they're called. There's 19 that are compromised, so not a lot, but they're still, they need to be replaced. And so under option two, we would add two pile caps for a total of 10, and then 10 stringers. And the cost estimate on that is about $500,000. The third option, which what I would describe as kind of the full-meal deal, that cost estimate is over $800,000. That would replace all of the compromised 17 pile caps, so 17 out of the 44. Again, 12 have already been replaced in recent years. So that would bring the total number to 29 over the last 70 years that have been replaced. And then the 19 stringers as well would be replaced as well. So again, the good news is that we have some options. We have some good alternatives to move forward on. We believe that there are contractors available, qualified, willing, and able to do the work. And then also, we don't believe the permitting is going to be that bad of an issue that will delay us in moving forward. And the reason I keep bringing up September 30 is, I think you all are well aware, we can only be over bodies of water between, I think, sometime in May and September. Beginning in October 1st through the winter months, the state prohibits, you know, work along or over bodies of water, because this is a body of the state of Washington. So again, we're in a good window of time to actually get the work done. If for some reason this can't be done by September 30, then it would bump out another year. So it'll be this time next year that we would be embarking on the work to remediate the maintenance issues that exist out there. In terms of financing, we are looking at some financing options. And I hope to report back to you at your next regular meeting on June 3, what those options are, as well as, I would presume, I'll probably have a recommendation for you as well. In addition, we'll have some more information on the specifics of each of the three options that I just covered with you. And then, of course, we will have an option, I mean, a recommendation. I will tell you right now that just with our conversations internally in the last couple of hours, we are, at this point in time, unless something really changes significantly, we're strongly recommending to go with option three, which is just to, if we're going to be in there and lifting up the bridge with a contractor, I mean, replacing eight or replacing 17, I know there's a cost there, but it's not going to get cheaper over time as well. And while we're there, it doesn't change the timeline either. You know, the work is, it's going to be between now and September 30. So I think that's probably the recommendation that we'll be leaning toward, which will be the 800-plus-thousand option with the 17 pile caps and the 19 stringers. And again, just want to point out, this is not something that's new. This has happened in the past. And again, most recently in 2012, when one of the caps was repaired, was replaced. And in 2018, in 2008, there were three of them. And the bridge was shut down on both of those occasions. Granted, not as long as it's anticipated here. And then in 2007, the bridge was overlaid as well. So there have been some significant maintenance issues that we've addressed on that bridge. Also, as we look out to the future, again, the bridge is solid. It's not going anywhere. We expect the bridge to last at least another 70 years. But again, you know, the remaining, the remaining pile caps, as we look out another five, 10, 15, 20 years, you know, those are probably going to have to be replaced as well, as well as perhaps the stringers as well. So this is going to be an ongoing issue, just as it has been in the past. And, but again, you know, the city does its due diligence every two years by working with both the state and the county engineer on, you know, evaluating and inspecting the bridge and trying to stay out ahead of this. So that's kind of where we are.
I have a quick question, and I'll open it up to council members. So to attempt to minimize the impact to the residents, it would be good to get a better feel for the engineering issue, if any, to allowing boat traffic? Because in my beady mind, not being an engineer, if there's no pedestrians walking, no bikes biking, no cars crossing, there's limited opportunity for further impact to the bridge if the piers are solid. And perhaps with netting underneath one of the passable channels, we can allow some boat traffic? Because otherwise, you're going to have one lobe of the lake significantly impacted by folks accessing the water off of Edgewater Park and its boat ramp, and only being able to be in that one particular lobe of the lake without able, being able to cross over. So we really need to look at that?
Actually, Mayor, forgive me. It wouldn't be all of the ways under the bridge. It's only a couple of areas where the boats go under. It'd be one or two of the areas that we're looking at, worst-case scenario.
So there would be some passability?
Absolutely, yeah. Most of the bridge would still be passable under, for boats to go under.
We were told no initially, but...
It's just several areas, and we're still working through that at this point in time.
Good, good to know.
Yeah. But for sure, long story short, there'll be... Yeah. But for sure, long story short, there'll be some way for boats to be able to get and kayaks and things along those lines.
Very good. My only other comment. There are crazy drivers everywhere. But I think along Mount Tacoma Drive, especially Meadow Road, when people think the road is closed, they tend to think that stop signs don't mean anything. And I almost got impaled today myself going down Mount Tacoma Drive by an idiot zooming through the cross, the stop sign on Meadow Road and also on Waverly. And it's like, it was like two for one today. So I don't know if we need a little larger sign or maybe one of those. I've seen solar operated sort of flashing signs to remind people they're coming up to a stop sign, whatever. We can take a look at, but between now and September, if the road is closed, people tend to think that there must not be any traffic. So why bother to stop? So that's my comment. Anyone else have questions for the city manager? Mr. Lorisella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we, as we consider the three options that you're going to bring forward and financing options in a couple of weeks, I'm guessing as they evaluate parts of the bridge, there's like a scoring system for individual pile caps. And they have some way of saying whether it's passable but barely or or something along those lines. I'd be curious to know what the remaining 15 look like from an assessment standpoint and potentially what it would cost if we were to add those this time around so that we knew going out that we had all of them having been replaced in the last 10 years. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, we very much appreciate the report. As you know, this went from zero to 60 pretty quickly for all of us. So getting a little bit more in-depth information is is very helpful. Okay, with that, we'll now turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may always be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, here at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to us electronically. And we have the clerk read the names of those who've submitted comments in advance for clarity and transparency of our record. Ms. Schumacher.
Mayor, the city council received written comments in advance of the meeting from Darlene Stevens.
Thank you very much. Those of you who would like to make public comment tonight, I just encourage you to please note there is a public hearing this evening specific to the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan portion of the agenda. So if you have comments pertaining to that, I'd ask that you wait so that your comments are properly taken as testimony during that public hearing. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. We simply ask that you queue up to the diocer, speak clearly into the microphone, identify yourself by name and residence, City of Lakewood, Ballboki City of Lakewood, and then you'll have your three minutes. Virtual comments are certainly allowed. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782. Enter the meeting ID number. I think it was flashed on the screen, but it's 868-7263-2373. And please use the raise the hand feature. So what I like to do is typically call on those who are on Zoom, one hearing or one meeting, and then call on the folks in the audience next. And then we reverse the order to give everyone a fair shake at their turn. So tonight, I'll call on those who are on Zoom or on the phone, followed by those persons who have signed in to speak here in the audience. The first I see is Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. This is Christina Manetti, Lakewood. And I just want to comment on the Lake Silicon problem. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath. So we're, you were discussing now about the bridge and fixing the bridge. And it occurs to me that there's one way that you could kind of kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. Of course, not literally. We don't want to have any violence. If you simply did the appropriate thing environmentally speaking and in terms of also salmon recovery and simply drained the lake, all you have to do is get rid of the dam, which has been there since the 1850s. And there's no reason to have a dam anymore. So if you remove the dam, the water would flow as it did before. And you could have a nice large park in the middle, 308 acres. You like to also expand parks in Lakewood a lot. So you'd have a nice big kind of central park. This would also solve the problem of Edgewater Park. You wouldn't have to improve it as you did before. And you wouldn't have to worry about the boat ramp as you did before. You wouldn't have to worry about Dr. Mary Jalili's house anymore. And it seems like it would be the best thing to do all around. I mean, as you know, I've sent you, I believe, the Seattle Times article about salmon recovery by Willie Frank and the person from the Anglers Association. I've forgotten his name. It's on everybody's mind. Salmon recovery is extremely important. They're a keystone species. A lot of other species depend on them. When they fall out of the ecosystem, the ecosystem collapses. And they're not only important for orcas who are also suffering, but everybody is talking about salmon recovery. And it's about time that Lakewood steps up and does its bit. Not only, you know, in terms of helping poor Clover Creek, but also in terms of improving the salmon habitat. Lake Silicon is on the list of Lakewood's priority habitat for shoreline restoration. I read that in your own document. So that's what my suggestion is. It would solve all kinds of problems, also the bridge problem. So thanks a lot. That's all I have. And have a good rest of your meeting.
Very good. Next, Deb Derlock. I see. I don't know if there's a hand raised. I don't see a hand raised. Anything else? Be a Zoomer on the phone, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. I will turn to those who are here. Physically, the first I see in the sign-in sheet is Abraham Mirjelini.
Hello, everyone. Hello, member of the councils. Of course, you know me. I am a resident of Lakewood, 9132 Edgewater Drive Southwest. And maybe you, Ms. Ali, that advised this board, maybe you could advise them why. First, ask them why they are condemning our home and two, advise them not to do it. I hope they listen to you. They don't listen to the people that they claim they are serving, unfortunately. And a lot of them, they came and talked to the about it. But it seemed like that they they are in the business of equity and inclusion by kicking us out of our home. So thank you very much. And about six months ago, I came before this board and I asked this this council and I asked the council that consider to maybe advocate a ceasefire in the war in Middle East between Palestinians and Israelis. I don't know if any of you have took a moment to even talk about it, let alone making any decision about it. Well, yesterday, the ICC made this decision. Mr. Mayor, you said that no money from this city goes over there. Well, billions of dollars have been sent with thousands of tons of ammunition. And they know from both sides, they have been killed. Not one side. Of course, one has more power over another, but both are. I came here to remind you that you really need to be conscientious about what you do and what you say and think about what you you say. See if what you say is actually correct. Is is something that it would stand the time? It doesn't. When I came before you, 15,000 Palestinians were murdered. About 1,200 something or 1,400 Israelis were killed. Today, there are 35,000 plus. Who knows how many more that nobody knows who they are. So are you going to accept responsibility for your inaction? Do you? Is this the way you serve the public? You think, well, I am not a Palestinian. I'm not Israelis. I'm a human being, and I have nothing to gain. What to talk about it. But I'm not surprised, though, because what you're in action is exactly the same action you have taken against us. Because we came to you and we said, you are not doing your job. So we are going to do something for ourselves. And this is what we got. Thank you very much.
That is the last individual who has signed in the public comment sheet. But certainly, if you're here in the audience and you'd like to address the council during the public comment period, you're more than welcome to do so. So if you'd like to queue up to the microphone, you're welcome to do so. Anyone else here to advocate draining Silicon Lake? Step up to the mic. Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 6, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of May 13, 2024. C, motion number 2024-33, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Townsend and Associates in the amount of $411,800 for contract review services related to the Western State Hospital project. D, motion number 2024-34, reappointing Jeff Cox to serve on the American Lake Lake Management District Number One Advisory Committee through June 2, 2027. E, motion number 2024-35, appointing Alice Fong and reappointing Megan Dempsey and Carrie Pedrick to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board through May 21, 2027. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of March 4, 2024.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented?
Move adoption of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, second by Councilmember Lorisella, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We turn to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the six-year 2025 through 2030 Transportation Improvement Plan.
Thank you very much for this. I'll call on Troy Podzinski, our Capital Projects Division Manager, for a brief overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you have a public hearing for the six-year Transportation Improvement Program from 2025 through 2030. This is a planning level document we use for grants as well as for ensuring that our transportation goals are consistent with the comp plan. This is, this program, this program has been drafted over the last six weeks. We've been before the Planning Commission in mid-April. Last week, on May 13th, we were before the study session with you with you. And we've posted it online through our social media, received no comments. At this time, we look forward to hearing any comments the public has so we can incorporate those into the final adoption plan for June the 3rd. Thank you very much.
I just have a question for you, just related to the item briefed by the city manager. Historically, the Transportation Improvement Program or the TIP has always had a line item for the inspection of the interlock and bridge and no sort of capital money, right? And because we now are looking at maintenance money, perhaps not capital improvement, do we need to update the TIP based upon the anticipated dollars we seek to potentially spend on options one, two, or three?
We certainly looked at that over the last week, considering what we are, what options we were faced with. Looking across the spectrum for grants, if we go to apply for federal grants, the bridge in its current condition is not functionally, it's functionally obsolete and will require significant, much more significant contributions from the city, even if we go grab federal money with the strings attached to the bridge. So we did not plan on, you know, increasing or putting that into the tip.
Any opportunity for state funds for grant monies for something like this? It might be helpful to have it listed in the tip?
There's not anything that is allocated for state projects. The federal call, the state call included federal money, which then poisons the well, if you will,
Okay.
and forces us to go down the down the rabbit hole on that. The state money is typically allocated via earmarks.
Okay, just thought I'd raise a question. Any other questions of Mr. Podzinski, Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that in the, this update of the TIP, which is a moving six-year thing, that there were no new projects added to the TIP for this iteration. And that seems to be that, in my recollection, that that's never happened before. There's always been something new put in is 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 that mostly a workload issue or why is that uniquely this year in this in this iteration of updating it?
For this year, we looked at it strictly as a workload and a potential for grants. I mean, we're looking out to 2030. We're, our calendar is pretty well booked through 2029, 2030 at this point for what we have, you know, internally, as well as what we've got capacity wise for designing. And then also for what the roads can actually handle for the amount of contractors we typically have. It's pretty well booked out. We have a healthy capital improvement program. We just did not propose putting anything more on top of it.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir, for the overview. Very much appreciate the work. This is the date set for the public hearing on the six-year 2025 through 2030 Transportation Improvement Plan. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the city council electronically and will be entered into the record as testimony for this public hearing. The clerk will now read the name of names of those who have submitted testimony in advance, if any. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we receive no testimony in advance of this evening's meetings.
Okay, very good. So this is the date set for the public hearing. I've received one individual assigned to testify on this matter and this matter only. And that's Abraham Mirjelini.
Hello, everyone. Of course, I hope I don't have to say that I'm a resident of Lakewood again. You all know. The reason I opted to discuss about this issue is when you want to do a transportation, of course, you are looking at city right of way. Well, I understand that the city of Lakewood has hired a surveyor who has come up with a map that is not dated. He himself, at least in our locality, has acknowledged in writing and in oral that what he has came up with is inconclusive.
If you can keep your comments focused on the Transportation Improvement Plan as presented.
Because, Mr. Mayor, this is about city right of way. And city right of way is where people, they walk, they have their bicycle, their car, their buses, all of those. So and 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 the map is supposedly, what we are told, they were asked that to have the city right of way. Although I don't know how they came up with drawing our property map in a way they draw it. So my advice to the city council is that at least have a courage to go and have recorded and accept responsibility for it. Or make those who came up with it accept responsibility for it, which they have not. At least they know when this was actually produced. At least give us some type of history. City of Lakewood at least has been, well, the city has been since 1996. However, However, Pierce County, and especially this area that we live, has been around for over a century. And, but seem like the city doesn't care about what it has been around all of those times, only care about what it has been maybe since the 1980s or 90s. And want to use that in order to condemn people's home, take their property, waste their money, waste their time, among other things, and basically gets its way. I hear from so many people that they are so upset with this city. They feel that they are not serving them. They are basically wasting their time, wasting their money. And they, while they pretend that they are doing something for the city, really they are doing anything but. This is not easy thing for me to say here, but I think I have a duty to convey to you. It's not only the problem we have with you, but also the community who come to us and they say the same thing, because you didn't listen to them. Thank you very much.
Again, I'd ask folks who are testifying during the public hearing on the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan to speak to the plan and not any particular issue pertaining to your own property that's not on the plan. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to testify during the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Plan for the 2025-2030 period? Seeing none, I'll go to those who are virtual or on the phone. The first is Christina Minetti.
Hello again, Christina Minetti, Lakewood. Quite some time ago, I saw in some maybe preliminary plans about the transportation outline for the coming years that there are plans to improve from Silicon Boulevard to Mount Tacoma Drive. And I live at the corner of Hill Grove and Edgewater. Yeah, Hill Grove and Edgewater, or actually Waverly, I suppose, one of them changes name there. And so I saw that it includes sidewalks, curbs, gutters, bicycle infrastructure and things like that, lighting. And I would really stress that we do not want more cars going through this neighborhood. It's already quite bad as it is. You know, there's the curve there. It's a blind curve because of those big laurel bushes on the back of Hollyhedge Development. And it's not really very much room there to put everything that might be imagined. And we don't really want to funnel more people through this area. Especially bothersome to us would be lighting because it's nice and dark. You know, it's very important, you probably heard, to reduce the lighting. Lighting disturbs migrating birds, the wildlife. We have a lot of trees around here. So if we have a lot of light at night, there are huge maples there at the back of Hollyhedge, full of birds, I'm sure you know. So we don't want to have lights here. We really don't want to have lights here, and we don't want to have more traffic. So I don't know at what stage it is, the planning to improve these things from Silicon to Mount Tacoma Drive, but really it's not a suitable road to become some kind of, you know, bigger thoroughfare. It is small, it is curvy, you know, there are corners there, you know, to be negotiated. And I don't know, I don't know if it's possible to rethink what's happening, but really it does disturb us and our neighbors. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to have this happen here. My husband goes walking all the time, and he's said numerous occasions, there's no need, you know, this is not an area that needs more sidewalks. You know, Mount Tacoma Drive, okay, yeah, that's, people go fast there. But he says people are walking all the time with dogs, without dogs, and everybody, you know, it's fine, you know, it is fine in this neighborhood, other than the busy Mount Tacoma Drive, which is tricky because it's going to be difficult to put sidewalks there on the curvy part that goes to the bridge because of all those big trees and stuff. So that's just what I wanted to say. Those are our concerns, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family as well. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next is Robert Jensen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Johnson of Lakewood, and I'm testifying on behalf of myself and my husband, Robert. We live on Interlock and Drive Southwest, and we thank you for the opportunity to participate in this important planning hearing. After speaking with city employee John Howe on April 29th, he told us that the last traffic count on Interlock and was well over 6,000 vehicles today, per day, I'm sorry, which differs from the city manager's information that was just provided. For the past three years, I have placed calls to the city citing my concerns for the safety of people who live along or travel this narrow stretch of road. What other residential street in Lakewood with a 25 mile an hour per speed limit that has no sidewalks, no curbs, or no standard-sized verges, no public footpaths, and limited lighting, has that many vehicles traveling on it per day? Additionally, larger utility trucks are not obeying the weight limits posted. We can see them coming and going around Mount Tacoma, from Mount Tacoma down towards the bridge, and they are causing major problems to the roadway surface and the bridge, and drivers rarely go the posted speed limit. This road is ripe for a serious accident to happen, and it's just a matter of time, in our opinion. Myself and others have had drivers attempt to pass us on blind corners, and I've even been honked at as we're trying to signal and stop to turn into our own driveway. This street has become a major thoroughfare, not the residential street it is meant to be. We would like to see significant mitigations to this road in the improvement plan. How will the city enforce the weight limit of these oversized vehicles? We see such vehicles all day long that are clearly violating the limit. Can we implement a toll on the bridge? 50 cents, something that would help pay for these ongoing improvements to the bridges was addressed earlier. Can we add more significant speed bumps that would actually make people slow down when they cross over them, rather than just going faster to get over it quicker? Or how about a roundabout at Mount Tacoma Road and Interlock and Drive? And sidewalks so residents have somewhere to walk? Our hope is for a joint community-city meeting for the residents of this road to meaningfully participate and generate ideas. Two weeks ago, there was a small accident at the end of our driveway where a person was going too fast to take the corner. That small accident resulted with no ambulances, only one vehicle was involved, no injuries, no tow truck, and it caused a backup of 75 cars in less than 10 minutes. And I have it all on video. My question is, what if there's a real emergency? How will crews get to those who need help? Please be warned, we need to take a long, hard look at what needs to be done to ensure this road is safe once again for those who must use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's the last individual that I see that's listed on Zoom. Do you see any others or via phone?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. So I will now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you all. We now turn to ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 804, amending the 2023 to 2024 biennial budget.
So for this, I will call on our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, to provide an overview of the proposed amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. The proposed budget adjustment was presented to the city council at the April 22 study session. We also had a public hearing on May 6 as required by state law. And before you this evening is the proposed budget adjustment for your consideration and approval. The budget adjustment makes the following types of modifications. It adjusts the 2024 beginning balance to reflect the 2023 actual. It also carries forward projects that the city council had previously approved but not yet completed. It adds items or projects or expenses that have been funded by grants or other contributions. And then there are some new allocations. The, if the city council were to approve the budget as presented, which is the same budget as what was presented at the study session as well as the public hearing, the general fund, ending fund balance would be in compliance with the proposed, or with the city council's financial policies. And that would maintain the 12% ending fund balance reserves. Operating income or revenues would be more than the operating expenditures as also part of your financial policies. And ending fund balance equates to $7.8 million if the budget adjustment were approved as presented. So that concludes my presentation.
And before I open it up to any brief questions, could you also please give an oral pat on your back and the back of your staff for the additional accolades that you've received, again, for financial transparency and the good financial work you've, you've performed with your staff?
Okay, will do. Thank you.
I mean, just mention the award that you received and, and how it obviously relates to this.
Okay.
Budget.
Sure. So we submit to the Government Finance Officers Association for our budget document as well as our annual comprehensive financial report, as well as a popular annual financial report. These are not required whatsoever for any city or county or state to do. It's something that we elected to do. The reason why we do that is the standards are much more stringent, and you have to go through their checklist, make sure that you've met all of their criteria. And for financial reporting, whether it be budget or something less than an annual financial report, it is graded by independent reviewers, so they're not even in the state of Washington. They are given to other experts in the field, and they will grade you on each of the criteria. And if you have met them, then you will be able to receive that award. The city has also been successful in receiving what they call the Triple Crown Award. And the Triple Crown Award is if you receive an award for the budget document as well as the annual comprehensive financial report and the popular annual financial report. And we've been successful in getting that for at least the past three years. I am expecting another one since we've received our latest PAFR. And the PAFR is really just a simplified version of a very complex financial statement. So that's what we've been up to.
Well, I just want to thank you for that publicly because it, there's lots of comments and reasons to improve, and we get good constructive feedback from the public, but it's also important to acknowledge the good work that's recognized by outside agencies. It reflects of the yeoman's work that you and your staff and the city manager have done for financial transparency for the benefit of the residents of the city of Lakewood. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the comments.
So any questions of Ms. Kraus, Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, subsequent to our looking at this at a study session, the city manager issued some revised guidance on spending based on the projections and the trending of some revenue to do that. And that included not filling some positions and moving forward. To what extent is that reflected in the ordinance that's in front of us today?
The ordinance in front of us is primarily looking at one-time savings. There are some programs that have an offsetting revenue. The, what you'll see when I present the first quarter report is you'll see some areas of revenues that will, that we're seeing, currently seeing as trending down. And then there are going to be some revenues that will help offset that. The, the directive that the city manager has put in place, even if they're on this budget adjustment, the directors are required to take that into consideration. So if the city council approved it, and, you know, let's say, and I'm making this one up, I don't have an example, but let's say that there was some travel and training involved, and it was out of state, and it was determined to be non-essential, those things would not move forward. The last time that the city manager put this in place, it was very successful. All of the departments worked together and independently to determine what was the best use of the current budget. And through that, with the savings, we were able to fund quite a bit in 2022. So that helped us out, and it also carried into 2023. So these here would still be prioritized among with the city manager's directive.
So I, you know, I understood that, and the city manager's communication was, wasn't really specific about the specific line items. It was generally of these kinds of expenses will be not taken or would, had to be reviewed before they're taken. But in, do I understand you to say that the impact of his new policy regarding this would, that the council would see the impacts of that in your quarterly reports to us as we do? Or how are we going to be informed about the things that are? In this case, it's more a question of things that are not happening.
Right. So a good portion of your budget adjustment or the proposed budget adjustment are for projects that have already been funded. So for example, even though the numbers seem quite a bit, a lot of it is for carry forward of capital projects. What you will see in the first quarter report is just revenue trends. You may be able to see some of the expenditure savings, but not so much because the, the directive was in place starting in second quarter as opposed to the first quarter. So eventually you will see some savings in the financial report, but at the year end, you will see more. So there's not like specific line items where the city manager said, you know, this department can't do this, is he focused more on, you know, the big, bigger picture, took a look at projects, and then there are still going to be some things that we'll just, we don't really have options for. If they have, you know, if they're required by state law, we won't cut those spending. It would be more of the discretionary or even in some of the areas that are important, we'll have to take a look at that.
So essentially, the ordinance that we have today is adjusting the 23 to 24 budget, but that it is anticipated that if, if some of the city managers, directors are determined to be implemented, like positions not filled or things like that, that'll be, that'll be a question of savings, and it isn't going to be a moving things that were in the budget and not doing them to create more money for, for other things.
Yes, we didn't bank on those savings to fund this budget adjustment.
Okay, and, and, and will that all just be caught up, yeah, at the end of the year, like in January or February, when we do a final adjustment on the biennial budget?
You'll see that when we head into the 25 and 26 budget, we'll have a better idea of what those savings are when I do the projections.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions of Ms. Kraus? If not, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 804? It's been moved by the deputy mayor, second by councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance number 804. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance 804 has been adopted. Mr. Caulfield, do we have any unfinished or new business to attend to?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Very good, then the floor is yours for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call upon our housing manager, Jeff Gumm, to give the city council an update on our abatement program, looking back to 2013 and progress into 2014. With that, Mr. Gumm.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to bring you an update on the abatement program over the last couple of years. Going to show you where we're at. So in 2023, we finished 14 projects. We're working on four this year. Last- We're working on four this year. Last year, eleven of those were dangerous buildings and three were nuisances, which is fairly consistent. We tend to do more dangerous buildings than nuisance properties. Three last year were commercial, four were multifamily and seven were single family. So you'll you'll see throughout this presentation a kind of a shift over the previous five or six years, we tended to work a lot with residential properties and we're seeing a shift to commercial and multifamily now. Twelve of those properties last year were completed by owners and two were completed by the city. So we had a eighty-five point seven percent owner compliance rate. And the reason why this is good is clearly it's it's monies that the cities aren't having to expend. We don't have to spend monies to tear a building down if the owner does it. So but what typically would be city expense for a single-family house is about forty thousand dollars to demolish it. So if we end up with somebody demolishing houses on their own and they do twenty of those, we just save an essence eight hundred thousand dollars that we wouldn't have otherwise had to spend. So that's that's good to see those high compliance rates. This year, the projects were fairly similar. We've done four single-family, three were completed by owners and one was completed here by the city. And that was very recently completed. And we have a fairly large slate of projects and as abatements go, these numbers were put together about a week ago and they've since changed. So twenty twenty-four projects, there was sixteen pending until I went out in the in the field today and I've found two more. So as of today, now there's eighteen pending projects.
Good.
That's kind of the kind of the way it goes. You drive around and you you tend to find things. So the the projects, the projects that we're working on now, again, there's eleven dangerous building, five nuisance. There's three commercial, six multifamily and seven single family. So we're starting to to see a few more on the on the multifamily side. The two that I saw today were again either commercial or multifamily properties too. So there's eight properties right now that we have under abatement order. And seven of those properties have permits issued already for abatement. And a majority of those are owner occupied or owners completing those abatements themselves. This is a map that shows you the the locations of the properties that we've done over the past couple of years. So twenty twenty-three are the green dots, twenty twenty-four are blue. And then there's a number of of yellow pending and and current ones that are under abatement order. And they're again, they're they're kind of scattered about the city. There's a fairly large cluster of some commercial properties on on Bridgeport Way and so forth that we're working on right now. And something that I thought was interesting and as we chart these things and look back at what we've done in twenty eighteen, you can see kind of a spike. We we did thirty-six projects in twenty eighteen. And prior to that, you can you can see the number of projects that the city has done. So total abatements were fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in that ballpark. And the owner completed percentages, I mean, they're they're fairly low until twenty eighteen. And even in twenty eighteen, you're looking at about fifty percent owner compliance. So we were doing a lot of the heavy lifting ourselves. And in twenty eighteen, we went out and and did a large number of properties. And kind of what happened is banks and property managers and owners of properties started to see what we were doing and have since kind of taken the initiative to deal with their properties on their own now. So we're seeing some of the benefits of of all that work that was done in twenty eighteen now because as as you can see in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I mean, the owner compliance rate has gone way up. So it's it's kind of nice if if there's a property that Bank of America owns, well, not Bank of America, Countrywide or Deutsche Bank, Deutsche Bank is has had a number of properties like they 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 act very quickly and we send them a notice now. It's it's very nice to see. Some of the other things that you can see on this on the list is fires and squatters. They've kind of subsided. We've we've been able to get a lot of the properties that we've had squatter problems with and and squatter issues tend to lead to fires in colder months. So we've been able to get ahead of a lot of that and and get rid of some of the properties that have been problems for ourselves, code enforcement, police and so forth. And then the other thing is commercial properties and multifamily. The the orange line is has kind of trended higher. So what used to be maybe a quarter to a third of of the properties is now looking at half to more of the properties that we're looking at for dangerous and nuisance are commercial properties. So we'll go through some of the twenty twenty-three projects. So this is a property thirty-three, fourteen, ninety-sixth Street South. It's Windsor Windsor Court Mobile Home Park. They had, this was literally the about a week and a half before Christmas, eleven days before Christmas. We myself and the building official got a call from the Lakeview Light and Power because there was a number of units that were down and on top of the park. So there was about twenty twenty units that were affected. Ultimately, they got some of them corrected and we got it down to fourteen. And then we ended up finding this. So the picture on the left, it's it's kind of hard to see. But there was a storage shed that they built on top of the power lines that came into the park. And so when we figured out where the electrical shortage was causing these other fourteen units to be out, they were out for a couple of days before this was discovered. They were able to dig up the lines and found all kinds of splices and and all kinds of illegal stuff going on in this park. There when we when we did arrive, the photo on the left shows a what's the backside of a power box? And there's a wire that goes through a lattice fence with a yellow tag there. That was something that the power company tagged. They were they were trying to bypass this circuit through somebody else's power box and powering the rest of the park. And it was, there was all kinds of electrical issues. So it was it took, I don't know, about three to four weeks, somewhere in that ballpark, to kind of correct all these issues. And and we were able to get them power, but just some of the things that we see often. Another property, seven one one nine Foster. This was a property that had an illegal garage conversion. So the the issue that we had would be with the the building kind of on the left photo is the closest to the to the screen was the garage. It was a family. There's his son lived in the garage. There was a an extensive amount of drug activity and all kinds of police calls. Photo on the right shows the interior conditions. I mean, it was literally just full of garbage. There was no functioning bathroom. There was no functioning water. It was it was not a safer sanitary place to live. There was sewage leaking down the sidewalk or not sidewalk down the back alley. After they fixed it, took them a little while, but it was sold to a contractor who fixed it up and subsequently sold it. And now it's a nice, well-used piece of property and and very well-maintained. Another one was a commercial property, eighty-one oh four to eighty-one oh six South Tacoma Way. This was a property that started with code enforcement. So code enforcement went out and literally they were dumping piles of garbage on the back of this commercial property, as you can see. And then I was I was alerted, so went out to visit. And when I went out, the photo on the left, I noticed there was a container that was added onto the property and there was an individual living inside this container. There was no permits for installation of a container, nothing allowing them to put it there. It was a commercial property. So you cannot expand residential uses on a commercial property under our code. So this is a property that we got them to clean up. We got them to remove the container and now it's back to a commercial property with no dumping. A property that I learned a whole lot about this, this was twenty-six, twenty-one, eighty-fourth Street Southwest was Car One Mobile Home Park. So this was a property that had extensive issues with sewer connections leaking on multiple units. There were seventeen known leaking septic tanks on this property and there was sewage on the ground in multiple places. So we bid sewer installations as well as demo. That'll be the next slide. But we installed sewer from the main road, so eighty-fourth into the park and it wrapped around the entire park and came back out. So all of the units potentially have a sewer to connect up to in the future, should they fail. And this was kind of the, it's the biggest sewer project I've ever done. I've done single-family sewer projects. But I never realized what closing down eighty-fourth, not really closing it down, but closing two two lanes of eighty-fourth would would entail and and trying to connect up the sewers to that. It was it was a very interesting experience and and I I've learned a lot about how to connect sewers. I've learned about lined risers and all of the different connections. Yeah, it was it was it was an interesting experience. But ultimately, we were able to connect up sewers, seventeen units now have functioning sewer systems rather than failing septics. The roads were repaired and the park is a heck of a lot better. The second phase that we did was a dangerous building phase. So there was two single-family homes that were failing on the on the complex. The one on the left was the main power building to the structure and there was a a single-family residence on the back side. Both of those structures were removed. We had to relocate the power coming into the park and there was a bunch of electrical improvements that we did to make that function. There was four dangerous carports that we removed. Those are are fairly similar or fairly similar, fairly exemplary carports that we had out there. Multiple carports were either listing or failing or tipping. The one on the right was a carport that somebody just continued to add on to and add on to and add on to. And there was no permits for any of the work. So those were removed. There was a couple of storage sheds that were removed that were added without permits. This was a one of two properties that we cleaned up out at the site. This one had a lot of junk and debris. People would go out and and scavenge and bring back to the property and and strip things down. And there was more metal scrap. I mean, anything you can imagine was on this was on this site. It it took three thirty-yard dumpsters to clean this one property out. And actually, we had to clean it out three times because we we cleaned it out, came back a week later after doing one of the other ones and had to clean it out again. Came back a week later, had to clean it out again. And it's it's going downhill yet again. So this shows one of the other properties that we cleaned up. This is kind of the after. So there's those two houses that you saw originally would would have been in the left photo on the the left and the right houses would have been there. And the right photo shows one of those two carports that was removed after and cleaned up. One of the properties that that I've probably, I don't think I've ever seen as much debris in a backyard of a single-family house as was on this property. So seven thousand and four Cherry Lane. Code enforcement had worked this property for a number of years. We we got it cleaned up a few times. It went backwards, got it cleaned up and went backwards. And so they decided to build a fence around the property rather than clean up their yard and just kept filling it up, which doesn't work because I'm tall enough to see over a fence. So I took a picture over the fence and we we were able to get this guy to actually clean up his yard. It's it's ninety-five percent cleaned up. I mean, he had a few things in the back and they were reasonably organized and and stored properly. So he he did get the the items out of his yard that he needed to. Another property, one hundred and twelve oh eight Military Road Southwest. We had a person in the City of Lakewood who had multiple properties, was well-known through code enforcement. This was one of them. He was storing multiple vehicles on the site. You can see there was all kinds of wood debris, garbage. And there was everything on the site that you can imagine. So this was cleaned up. Code enforcement did a lot of work with this specific property. And it's ultimately, they they fixed the house, they put a new deck on the front of it and this house has again sold since it was repaired. Property that we have on Pacific Highway one, two, three, one, four. So this was a commercial property that used to be the old Tactical Tailors. And it's been sitting vacant for a while. It was recently purchased. We went in, it had squatters inside of it. There was graffiti and all kinds of illegal addition, removal of electrical wires. And it was it was in in fairly bad state in the interior. So it has since been purchased. They fenced it off. They've completed the work on the inside. And I believe they have permits submitted now for some commercial coolers. So this is, they're looking to convert this to a a commercial food storage facility of some sort where they're distributing frozen foods. Another one that that I think is kind of nice to show, it's not what we typically do, but it's something that we also do. This was a Thirty-third Avenue South right-of-way. There was a a line of junk vehicles that code enforcement had been working with for years. It was an apartment complex and they were they whoever was storing these vehicles just had them in one state or another of complete disarray. They were, some of them had parts missing. There was all kinds of car parts stacked up, all kinds of debris. And we were able to do a nuisance abatement and get code enforcement to tow these vehicles off there. And that street right-of-way has looked exactly like that since we cleaned it up a year ago. It's it's a great turnaround. One, four, 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 zero Union. This is a kind of a really old structure that's been around for a long time. It used to be a barber shop. It was a multiple different sales things down there. I think it was a nail shop for a while. Ultimately, it was crumbling and failing. So the owner very happily removed this property. Wasn't, didn't take a lot of work. He purchased the property from the previous owner and within a a year, he removed the structure. A duplex that we worked on, one, four, oh, eight to one, four, ten, hundred and twelve. This was a a property that the police department started. There was a chop shop that was being run out of one of the garages. Multiple cars would come and go out of this thing, all kinds of car debris. The garage ultimately, when we cleaned it up, was three-quarters of the way folded, the ceiling of car parts and all kinds of things inside. So the owner was able to to kind of work with us. She signed a voluntary abatement order. We cleaned up the property and she repaid us. She just didn't have the ability to to do it herself. There wasn't, she didn't have the funds. So ultimately, she was able to pay us back and the property has been reasonably cleaned up. It's it's staying fairly decent at this point. I I'm still monitoring it a little bit here and there. A property down in the Woodbrook neighborhood, seventy-three, nineteen, hundred and forty-six. So this is a fairly large commercial property. There was three single-family residents, a couple of mobile homes, garage, multiple RVs. And this property had fires over two years, somewhere in that ballpark. There was squatters who were kind of in and out of these properties. So we were able to work with code enforcement and the police department and get rid of these buildings. The the owner has purchased multiple properties in that neighborhood and they are working on developing them for industrial use and warehousing and so forth. And and that's what ultimately this property will be. I I believe right now there's there's an issue with this one. The owner has cut down a a number of trees on the property. So code enforcement is working with the owner to address that issue right now. So this property, you all have seen this a couple of years ago. It was a it was a two-phase project. So there was a, used to be an old garage and a and a mobile home on the property that were demolished in twenty twenty-two. And this was the probably the worst property I've ever seen. I mean, there was, it was about, I think it's over an acre, acre and a half. I forget what the property size is. But there was not one square inch of ground that you could see on the entire property. There was fifty or sixty just parted-out vehicles, containers, garbage, everything that you can imagine was on this property from the front all the way to the back. So we we were able to clean this property up and this last year, they finally demolished the remaining house on the property. So it sits as a very nice, clean vacant lot. That's what we did in twenty twenty-three and in twenty twenty-four. One thing that that I'll I'll let council know is in twenty twenty-four, one of my persons, personal staff members, Heather Holverstot, who manages the rental housing program, has has stepped in to help me with rental or abatements as well as rentals. So she has kind of picked up a lot of slack. I've I've been doing a lot of things with CDBG and some other things that I have to do for the five-year plan. And she has been a godsend and has done four of the five projects that we've done this year have been Heather. So I just wanted to let you all know that it's that's working out well and and it will it will prove benefits down the down the line as we're able to do a larger number of number of projects and address bigger issues. So this was a a property that rental housing actually found. We're we're starting to see some of that as as rental housing goes through these properties and and we're discovering issues that are are not addressed. So this was a a single-family house kind of in the downtown area here on Community Place. And it was completely loaded. Again, it's very, very hard to see much of the grass. There was, there was a little bit of cleanup before we we went out and took these photos. But there was thirteen cars, two boats, a huge storage container in the front, just all kinds of debris, multiple motorcycles. There's a a stretched limo that was parked in the back. The front yard was again full of vehicles and all kinds of things that were brought on to site. And we were able to work with the owner. We got the tenants who were in there out the complex.
Mr. Bokey has a question.
Questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gum. Just a quick one.
Little more philosophical question. In your experience, how does something like this start? I mean, I I don't think people start with in mind that I'm going to fill my yard with junk so you can't even see the grass. I mean, it doesn't start that way. What?
Hoarding.
Is it just, is it hoarding or is it just circum, what is it?
Yeah, it's it's, we, I see two things. One of them, when we get a lot of the properties filled up with with cars and car parts and and just random scrap metal and stuff, that tends to be someone who's who's going out and bringing either stolen goods on or bringing just things on to the property and parting them, scrapping them and selling them. So we see a lot of that, a lot of illegal activity. And then, yeah, there's there's some issues with some people who are have got some hoarding issues and just continue to bring things. And it's it's hard for them to get rid of what they have. I mean, it it's their belongings and they they think they're very important and it's it takes a little bit of little bit of effort and finesse to to work with those. And some of our code enforcement staff are really good at kind of working them to to get rid of a little now. We'll come back and maybe a to get rid of a little now. We'll come back in maybe a month and we'll get rid of a little bit more and a little bit more. And you just have to work with them and and ultimately you can get them into compliance. And if they don't, then we we come in and clean it up. But it it tends to be a lot of illegal activity and hoarding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the this property again was cleaned up. The property owner was happy. He was, he was able to have his tenants evicted because they ultimately filled his property with all these issues. Um, and now it's re rented and productive property in the city. Uh, this is one that we recently had the owner recently remove. So this is seventy seven oh four Bridgeport Way. This would be the old Flet Barn. Um, about six years ago, it was posted with a a stop work order. The the owner had completely gone in and stripped out the interior, reframed a lot of it, removed a lot of the crucial structural supports. And then put a bunch of OSB on the outside of this to kind of try and keep it from collapsing is really what he did. Um, and we were not able to get the owner to fix this property. He he instead chose to tear it down. So about three weeks ago, this barn was removed. Uh, another property, hundred and twelve oh six Military Road. Again, this was owned by the same individual who had multiple properties um that we've addressed over the last few years. This one it was a little single family house. It had fire, illegal electrical modifications that actually caused the fire. And it sat vacant for about a year to a year and a half, maybe two years. And ultimately, it was demolished. It was purchased by a construction company that's looking to build a new house there. So the photo on the right is, it's a little, it's quite a bit further along than that photo. I mean, they're actually building a structure on there now. So there will be a a new single family house on that property. Eighty five oh nine Willow Wood is the the most recent property that that we did. Um, and I've got a great story with this one, Heather and I. So we were, we were out at this property. Um, there was multiple junk vehicles. The backyard had vehicles in it. The front yard had vehicles in it. There was all kinds of um illegal construction, mostly demolition inside. Um, the house had been completely stripped. There's all kinds of, you can see in the photo on the right, all kinds of construction debris. It was this, this person who owned the house had been a problem for over ten years. So we'd gotten multiple complaints from neighbors. Code enforcement had gone out there multiple times and has kind of, we were, we're able to get it into states of compliance and then falling back, states of compliance and falling him back. So ultimately, when when this came to us, uh, myself and Heather, we went out and inspected the property. Um, there was all kinds of issues. The ins, the outside of the house, the, this is the back, the photo on the left, there was three additions that were built on the back without permit. There was multiple additions on the side of the house without permit. Um, the interior, it's really kind of hard to see in this photo, but hopefully on yours, it shows up better. The interior of the house, this is, there was a fire in the chimney. The the person that was in there just decided to destroy his chimney one day and was continuing to burn various debris in his in his house and ended up catching it on fire. So the fire department came out, put it out. Um, he was removed from his property. And we ultimately demolished this site. But it was a, it was a two phase demolition. So we went out to the site originally. This is, this is kind of, kind of shows you what a, what an impact it makes in the neighborhood. We we went out and the first time I was out there, the the owner who lived directly next to this house, um, adjacent to it, he he came out and he said, you know what? I've seen people out here for a long time. I'm getting tired of this. About it's ten years. What what are you gonna do? And I said, well, give me six months. And we'll address this property. I told him what I did. Um, within three and a half months, we were able to get the uh warrant to clean up the outside. So we did the legal process, went through it, got filed for our warrant, um, cleaned up the outside. I went back to the the neighbor's house the day that they were cleaning it up and he came outside and it was just absolutely beaming, smiling. Um, he introduced me to the other three neighbors in the neighborhood who were also happy. Um, and then proceeded to say, well, that's great. Now what are you gonna do? And so I told him, well, just we're we're working on the next phase and the next phase is going to be to remove the house because it's it's clearly a dangerous structure. So we were able on another about month and a half to two months, somewhere in that ballpark. We were able to get it under contract for demolition for abatement. We removed the house. Um, Ms. Holverstot and I showed up one afternoon when the contractor was was demolishing the house. He'd started maybe quarter of the way through. And we pull up into the cul-de-sac. And all four neighbors are sitting in the in the end of the cul-de-sac with their chairs in a semicircle facing the house. And they all had margaritas. They were celebrating that house coming down. And it was, it was, it was interesting listening to them because they all had stories of all the issues over ten years and and they were very, very happy that the city tore that down and and wanted to pass that. All of them wanted to pass that along to you as council members. They were, they were very grateful that the city did act and and finally address their issues. So
They toasted to our health.
Yes, yes. Um, and then active abatements. So this is one that we're, we're still working on. This was, again, this has been a long property. This is forty nine fourteen hundred and it's actually hundred and fifteen Street Southwest. I didn't notice the typo. Melody Apartments. So there's an eight unit apartment complex that had a fire. They have demo, now not demo, they have remodel permits to fix this apartment building. Um, they're kind of going slow. Uh, both the building official and I need to follow up with this one and kind of see where they're at and and light a fire under them to get this property addressed a little bit quicker, but they do have permits to fix this and that's what they intend to do. A couple of other properties. These ones are are taking a little while. We we recently discussed with the contractor kind of where he's at. So these are ninety six forty six, ninety six sixty eight Bridgeport. These are our two rental housing properties that have a number of life safety issues that have been being addressed. So the the life safety issues have been addressed and now they're kind of doing the last of the building issues that they need to get permitted and and final so we can get these off of our list. Um, forty six twelve hundred and eleventh Street, uh, commercial property. This one, um, it's been vacant for a number of years. It had people that were living in one of the units, actually two of the units. There's no power to the entire complex. There's no water. Um, people were were renting one of the units and then the other one was living uh under squatter state, I I would guess. Uh, we were able to get them out of there and had the owners board these board these properties up. And there's the four houses that remain are are at the end of their useful life. Really, there's a a large amount of illegal modifications and all kinds of life safety issues inside these structures. The owners ultimately in the process of getting demo permits to tear them down. So these will be gone soon. Um, sixty eight thirty one Topaz Drive. It was kind of hard to take a decent photo of this, but the what it, what it is, is it's a property that sits um on the on the creek above. Uh, it's it's Pierce County property. Most of the the creek that runs back down behind um Topaz Drive is is county property. So this, this was a about seventeen hundred square foot little shed that they built on the back of the house and they kept adding to it. And it it ultimately became this kind of monstrosity that Pierce County notified us and said, hey, you know what? I, this is on our property. So they they got a survey and and proved, yes, this was built on Pierce County's property. So we have an abatement order and the owner, the owner is in the process of getting this thing removed. It's, it was hard to take a picture. You have to hike through the woods and you go up the hill and it's it literally is at the very top of the hill above Chambers Creek and it it sits on a giant rock pile where it shouldn't even be. So it's, it needs to go. A property then, uh, Tillicum, hundred and twenty, or sorry, this is in uh Springbrook, one twenty six twenty two Lincoln. Uh, you can clearly see this was a nuisance property. It it started and it became a a dangerous property. So there's, there's been a number of squatters in the in the inside. There's some interior damage, all kinds of garbage and debris. Uh, this one is one that we'll be looking to get a warrant for soon to have removed. And this is a a property on eighty four twelve Orchard in Tillicum. The photo on the, I'll start with the one on the right. So the photo on the right, there's actually a garage under this, this parcel. It's extremely overgrown with blackberries and all kinds of vegetation. Actually, there's a car under there as well, too. It's couldn't really get a picture of it because it's hard to see what's under there. Um, and then the photo on the left. The only way that uh Ms. Holverstot and I, we we described this as she used to have a Barbie house when she was young and you open up the Barbie house and you look into it and you're able to see the walls and into the house. So the photo on the left is is just that. You're looking at the inside of a house with the outside wall having completely collapsed. So as as you start, closest to us would be the bedroom. Then there's a center wall. There's a bathroom. And there's a bedroom on the other side. And you can actually see that make out the toilet in the middle room. So it's, it's completely collapsing and starting to fall apart. So this is, this is one that we're moving fairly quickly to get a warrant on and and address this property. The the owner who lives in there is an elderly lady and once, once we get to the point of a warrant, we'll do what we can to help her with relocation and assistance and and get her connected to services. The the bad thing is, is she has um, an attorney who's working with her who is not actually working on her behalf. He's, he's the beneficiary of her estate as well as the person who is working with her to maintain it. So he doesn't have much of a motivation to to fix it. That's uh, property I just literally visited before I came here. So seven, one, one, zero, hundred and forty sixth Street. This is Jamestown Mobile Home Park. As you all know, this was the mobile home park that had the fire. It destroyed nine units. There was actually a tenth unit that's got significant damage that will come down at some point in time. Um, as of tonight, when I went out there, um, all of the debris has been cleaned up on all of the sites, uh, all of the mobile homes that were damaged have been removed. Except for the one that they they still haven't finished up with yet. There was actually somebody still living in it. So that one's gonna be ultimately removed, but that site has seen significant improvements. Um, all of the people that were in those units did apply either for Red Cross assistance or other types of assistance. We offered all of the families our relocation assistance and only one actually took us up on that offer and we were able to relocate them and help them with some deposit monies to get into a apartment somewhere else. So everybody that was displaced from that unit was able to get assistance and has moved somewhere else at this point. Uh, one, four, eight, one, eight, Woodbrook and one, four, nine, one, four, Woodbrook Drive. So this is Wagon West. It's uh Woodbrook Mobile Home Park. There's a a few of them. Both Jamestown and Bob's and the Woodbrook and Wagon West are are cooperative owned. So the owners are all working together to address these properties. But this one specifically, this would be the the Woodbrook Mobile Home Park. There's, there was nine buildings. There was seven little, little houses that are about six hundred square feet that you can see in these photos. And then there was a couple of structures on site, a fairly large um residential house and a another office type building that that were falling apart that they were remodeling. So this was another rental housing program. We we ended up posting these as unsafe to occupy. There was a couple of them or burned out. And they have since come in for permits to, sorry, I went to the wrong one. They've come in for permits to redo all those units. And as of tonight, I visited that as well. They finished getting close to finishing probably three or four of those units. Um, and they should have all of them done within the next two and a half months or so, and those will all be turned back into productive rentals. Uh, property in the in the Tillicum neighborhood, one, four, four, two, three Portland Avenue. It struck, it had a structure fire about, I don't know, probably three months ago, four months ago, somewhere in that ballpark. They were working with the insurance to get this addressed. And they have permits in for a remodel of that unit. So we're going to allow them to fix the house um and move back into it once they're finished. So those are the the city's abatement projects. Questions or?
Any questions, Mr. Bran Center?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gum. Uh, with respect to the Car One Village and having to transition the entire Mobile Home Park from septic onto uh, 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 onto sewers. That that obviously had to involve both the Health Department and the and the Pierce County sewer folks. Did the, 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 that our abatement costs, and I I saw that we we've recovered all of them already, but did we have to pay the the permits and the connecting fees and all of that uh as, 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 as an element of that uh abatement?
Yes, we did. The the total cost of the abit, well, sewers were about eight hundred thousand to hook up sewers and the connection fees were about sixty seven thousand dollars for the seventeen units that we hooked up. So yes, we did pay for that as well.
So now that we've done that and there's like fifteen or sixteen units that are there. Are they now all getting sewer bills? The individuals that are there or is the property owner having that sewer thing done as a single single unit where he's, he's receiving the bill?
It it's the owner who's receiving the bill.
On the Jamestown Mobile Home Park. You know, the, the the catalyst for having to abate that was the fire on the adjacent property, which was a property that had not been maintained and had become a tinder essentially to be able to go and do that. And as we're now entering another summer season, how are we set up either through the abatement system or the code enforcement system or whatever? Because it doesn't really work as an abatement very well if you have someone who lets a property get into that condition because by the time you go through all the court things to do something to it. So looking, looking ahead to to the, to the summer and the potential for for fires adjacent to residential structures. Uh, how are we set up to be able to do something more proactive that could prevent another Jamestown?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question and a good point. Um, so in our community safety resource meetings that we have once a month, that's, that's something that we've talked about and we talked about very recently. So I know, I know the police department is very active and it's one of their their priorities now to to kind of pay attention to those properties. We still have some properties where where squatters are on on some of them and and they're got vegetation and so forth that's overgrown. So we are aware of those and and we are making them more of a priority. Um, Lakewood Municipal Code is set up to manage those properties very well. Um, eight point four, zero and eight point five two are Lakewood Municipal Codes for overgrown vegetation and property maintenance. Um, and it's, it's a, it's an easy thing to enforce. So code enforcement has um, been a little bit more proactive and they they will be a little more proactive as summer goes along and on addressing those properties and and getting property owners to either mow their properties or remove, remove overgrown vegetation or address them. But it it will remain an issue because there's, there's still a decent number of undeveloped properties that have those conditions on them.
So, you know, you, 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 the, one of the properties that you highlighted that was going on was uh on the on a hundred and forty six, seventy three nineteen, a hundred and forty six. Okay. And essentially you remove all the buildings off of it and it's that it's sort of poised to eventually be commercial development. But what do we put in place to allow a fallow property like that becoming something that that's got too much vegetation on it to be able to go and do that? You know, we've sort of closed out the abatement because we got the buildings gone. But is the, is the owner made some commitment to keep it? It maintains even even though there's no immediate development gonna go happen there?
The owner has not made a commitment specifically for that property. No, the, that is a property that code enforcement, um, I believe code enforcement officer Heims, I think, is dealing with that property. Um, that owner actually owns two, two properties that are gonna be kind of an issue for us and and um, CEO Heims has gone out and met with the owner on the property and has pointed out issues. Um, he's, I believe that property specifically, he's issued a warning to her to correct some issues and to bring it into compliance. One of them was clearly cutting the trees down without permits. And the other one is to clean up the property. So, so we are actively addressing that property as well as one other in the, in the neighborhood that that she owns. So um, it's, it's something that we intend to continue to do. And if if the owner doesn't address them, then then we could do that through a nuisance abatement under Lakewood Municipal Code eight point one six, under the eight point forty and eight point five two for property maintenance.
So with respect to maintaining vacant properties so that they don't become fire hazards, do you think that do you think that the Lakewood Municipal Code gives you the right tools to be able to protect the community? Or is there some adjustment to the code that the council could take that would allow you to be more proactive and effective?
No, I I think the Lakewood Municipal Code has what it needs. The the teeth are there, the the enforcement um action is there. It's it's very clearly written. It's very easy for the for the city to to decipher and execute the enforcement of. And it's also very clear for the citizenry to understand what it is that they have to do to maintain their properties. Um, if if there were anything to improve upon, it would be at the state level. Because at the at the state level, nuisances in recent years have been restricted to to two thousand dollars um, that the city can recover costs for. And and I don't know of a single property in Lakewood that I can do a nuisance abatement on for two thousand dollars. It's it's something that unfortunately our legislature has changed. And if there were anything, that would be something that I would say maybe on the legislative side to to look at maybe. See if we could get back to a a level more sustainable than two thousand dollars. That that being said, that doesn't preclude us from doing an abatement on a property that exceeds two thousand dollars. And we we quite often do. It's it's something that you you just have to to weigh the the benefits versus the the cost and and address a property and and remove the dangerous conditions. And we typically send the the owner a bill for all of the costs, no matter what. Um, and if they don't pay us back, let's say we spent thirty five hundred dollars on a property, we'd send them a bill for thirty five hundred. But legally, when we file a lien on the property, we can only file it for two thousand dollars.
All right, well, well, you know, obviously from your report over the years, you and your 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 department have done a lot of good work and made a lot of difference in the city of where things are. It's it's unfortunately that new things keep cropping up, but uh, there's some job security in that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Mr. Lorsella, then Mr. Pearson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gum, for coming in. Uh, not a question so much as just a compliment on you and your team. Uh, you're really making a difference and it's highly visible. And our residents feel safer because of what you do. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team, uh, because this is the part of city operations that that folks see that makes them proud to be here, myself included. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gum. And yeah, I would echo those sentiments. Um, really impactful work and, you know, going out to some of those sites, I can imagine is pretty difficult when you're seeing an elderly person living in something that doesn't have walls. So that's pretty sad. That's, you know, that's stuff that you see in third world countries and, you know, we are better than that frankly. So um, uh, just a quick question. Um, you had, you guys cleaned up seven junk cars. What is, if folks see junk cars out in the right of way, what what is the definition of a junk car? And what's the correct, you know, action to take? Do they report it on the Lakewood uh app or or what what goes on? Do they call the cops? You know, what what are the course of actions? If you could just talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so there's there's a couple of different ways that that is done. So we we consider both junk and inoperable vehicles. So junk is a vehicle that in essence has parts that have been removed or whatever. So it's it's not operable on the street. Um, it has been sitting for somewhere for more than three months, uh, sorry, thirty days. Um, and the other criteria is value. It has, I think it's less than five thousand dollars in value of the of the of the vehicle. I think it's five thousand dollars. I'd have to look and see exactly, but those are the three criteria for junk. And then inoperable are fairly similar. So you can't operate it on the street. It has significant damage. Um, anything, anything that any other hazards that would preclude a a vehicle from safely being operated. And again, it's been sitting for more than thirty days. So they're they're kind of the same thing with a slight different twist. But whether it's operable, sorry, inoperable or junk, they can't maintain it on a piece of property unless it's inside of a garage. If it's in the right of way, um, we can have them removed. Some of the issues that we've had lately, again, it goes to the to the legislature having issues with us removing vehicles that are are someone's home. So police have had issues with with removing some RVs or vehicles that someone's clearly living in because we're not allowed to tow somebody's home away. So those are some of the some of the issues that we're having to deal with. Again, it would be great on the legislative level if we could correct those. But until we do, we're we're kind of hamstrung with some of those. But those are, those are typically addressed through the the nuisance process. So code enforcement will go through and and do some warnings and some citations. If they don't address it, it comes to me for the nuisance property. Um, and then I will notify the owner. And ninety nine percent of the time on nuisance properties, the owners just, they just correct them. It's it's not a difficult issue for them to deal with. And and in this, the case that you were mentioning on the in the right of way, that was a an apartment complex. And the owner had been trying to get people to address that, the actual clients that were renting from him. And once we were able to do that, then um, he was able to get his tenants to remove some of those. And what they didn't, we towed off out of the right of way because we can, we post them and it's a forty eight hour notice. The the tow companies come in that we have contracted and we remove the vehicles.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, you know that we appreciate you and your team and the work that you do. We truly do appreciate you. I'm just curious as to why those some places get so totally out of control. Does anyone ever complain? The neighbors in the area to complain before it gets to that point?
Some properties, yes. Um, we run into a lot of neighbors who are, they're they're scared of the the person that lives next to them. That was kind of the issue with the eighty five one nine Willow with the, they were really kind of in fear of of their health and safety from that that person. Uh, we see that a lot, so they don't necessarily complain until they just can't take it anymore. Uh, but we do get, we do get a number of complaints early on as well. And and usually what happens is when we get the complaints, code enforcement is the is the initial contact. So it's it's always the the carrot and the stick thing. So I mean, we're always out making sure that, hey, here's what we we need you to do. We get you into compliance and we try that first. And if if that doesn't work, then ultimately the the stick comes and and we have to do an abatement on it. But there's, uh, we tend to find a lot of a lot of neighbors that that don't want to be known. So when they when they make complaints, they ask to be anonymous and we we do that for them, so.
Thank you. I know you can't be every place all the time, but I was just curious about that. But I'm excited about the units that are going to be restored. I'm looking forward to the finished product. I'd love to see that. It's a beautiful area.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was kind of nice going out and seeing some of the things that are are coming back and and being turned back into useful properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as a follow up to Councilmember Pearson's question on junk and in op cars, I often wonder at what point does the multiple tourist lot on Bridgeport close to Stillcom Boulevard meet that definition?
That property is unique. Um, and I I know of that because of my previous boss, Mr. Buer. I've I've had a discussion with him years ago. But the in the understanding with that property is there's an underlying agreement that we have with that owner. Because when we built the city, he was the individual who owned property that allowed us to build fifty ninth street access to get in into the the city its itself, the road. Without him allowing us to use his property, we would not have been able to do what we have done. And I am not aware of what that underlying agreement is, but I was told that I am not to address that property.
Of course, that property is nowhere near fifty ninth, but he must have owned something on or near fifty ninth. So I guess we'll learn more. Okay, well, again, uh, kudos to you and your team for all the good work on the current abatements in the past. And we look forward to more success. Any any thoughts on when we might get paid on the fire loss on Gravel Lake?
No, we we've had a number of people that are interested in buying the property. Um, the problem is they're dealing with Mr. Mayberry, who's not very rational on what he would like to see for that property. So most likely that will end up going to foreclosure in a year and a half to two years. I forget the exact date. And then that will come up for auction. And one of the, one of the individuals who owns a number of properties in the area will either buy it before then or at the auction is my my thought.
Very good. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Caffield.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a few other updates. Police Chief Patrick Smith um passed on some crime stats to us for the first four and a half months of the year. And just wanted to point out in summary, overall, crime statistics are down almost thirty six percent. Um, that includes um crimes against person down almost twenty one percent, including aggravated assaults being down twelve percent. Uh, property crimes are down thirty six, I'm sorry, property crimes alone are down thirty eight percent. Motor vehicle thefts alone are down almost two thirds, sixty seven percent. So for example, for the first four and a half months in two thousand twenty three, there was five hundred and seventeen reported vehicles stolen. This year through four and a half months, there are a hundred and seventy three. However, in the month of May, May of twenty three, there was fifty five. Missed the first two weeks of May, there was only ten. So um, again, a reflection of the technology being full staffed and, you know, just the proactiveness and the allocation of resources that Chief Smith and his command team and of course patrol and other supporting elements of the police department are doing day in and day out. Um, also, um, it's it's good to see that um, reported shots fired um are down um almost twenty five percent, which a lot of communities cannot say. Actually, a lot of communities cannot say what what Chief Smith is reporting here as well. So just wanted to pass that on to the council. I know later on in the year, he'll be in with you with um a full comprehensive update of second quarter ac- activity. Um, Mayor, perhaps under city council comments, we received um a letter from the Pierce, from Tier Pierce Transit that they are having their uh Board of Commissioners composition review meeting at the end of June. This is something that they do every four years, I believe, is pursuant to Washington State law. And as a part of that, the City of Lakewood, as a um member of the board, and I know Mayor Whalen, you sit on that, they're uh looking for a uh elected representative from the City of Lakewood to sit on that composition board to evaluate what the composition of the board should look like moving forward, beginning in two thousand twenty five. So just wanted to pass that on. If you could let us know and we can follow up with um Pierce Pierce Transit on that. Um, I can't remember if I reported this to you at your last meeting, but um just wanted to close the loop that the uh Pierce County Hearing Examiner on the Pierce County uh Village Project, that began on April twenty ninth and ended on May ninth. What we what we've been told or what what we've read is that the Pierce County Hearing Examiner is expected to have a decision by the end of this month would be, which would be the end of next week. So as we hear information, we'll be certainly share that, share that with you. Um, also, Partners for Parks uh reports that they um have received a pledge of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Norcliff Foundation towards the H Barn Project. That brings their uh total pledges and fundraising to um a little over two million dollars. Uh, their commitment to raise three and a half million.
Two million, they're over two now?
They're over two now.
Okay.
That's great. Your commitment is three and a half million.
Yep.
So just wanted to pass that on to you. Um, also, uh, you know, the City of Lakewood, we continue to work with our partners regarding testing for algae blooms and toxins on Wahop Lake. Uh, recently, the State Department of Ecology in conjunction with King County restarted their annual lake testing program for certain toxins at Wahop Lake. Actually got a head start on it in February because it was an early lake algae bloom. Um, however, the um, the testing that came back were negative for those specific toxins. Uh, there was uh another test that was done actually earlier this month, just a couple of weeks ago. And uh, same thing, uh, very well below detection limits or not even applicable. Um, and and basically just because it's an algae bloom in a lake, whether it's Wahop Lake or anywhere, doesn't mean it's toxic. That's, that's the kind of the outcome of 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 these reports. And again, it's not just Wahop Lake, it's all lakes in Washington State. So just wanted to pass that on, that we continue to do our due diligence there. Um, and then as it relates to your calendar, uh, tomorrow evening, Mayor, you'll be having your uh, Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Stillcom Park Pavilion, the comprehensive plan on on Wednesday at four P M. Clover Park High School will be hosting their annual Arlington project, which has been in place since two thousand eight. If you plan on going, you can certainly just show up, but they're also asking for RSVP so that you can be um recognized at 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 the event. On Saturday is the youth summit. And again, uh, as I think we've mentioned before, uh, the youth council is looking for the council's participation uh specifically from about, you know, eleven to twelve and doing some panel interviews with 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 all of you. Um, on uh Memorial Day on May twenty seventh, there is a Memorial Day event um over at the uh Mountain View Garden of Honor um at the at the funeral home and um and their memorial park over there, and that's at two P M. Uh, also next week on, it's Thursday, May Thursday, May thirtieth, PSRC is having their annual general assembly meeting. So if any, I know uh Councilmember Pearson's going, so if anybody else plans on attending, um, I think he's looking for somebody to drive up with. And I'll check with our staff as well, Councilmember. And then um, May thirty first on Friday from one to two P M, uh, there'll be the Chambers Creek Canyon Trail Phase Two groundbreaking event. And that'll be at the same location, uh, the bridge that the dedication that occurred about a year and a half ago. And so for Lakewood folks, for all the distinguished guests, which include you, uh, just park over by Phillips Road and 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 walk down as as you did before. If you plan on attending. On uh, June first is the um dedication of the Dr. Claudia Thomas House over on uh Boat Street over in Lakewood. So I'm looking forward to seeing seeing how that, I saw a picture of it, it looks absolutely beautiful. Um, and then also later on that day, that's at ten in the morning. And then also later that day from four to seven P M is the Saturday Street Festival. And I understand the mayor is going to be a um judge in the the car show.
Oh, boy.
So if you have a car in the car show, you might want to maybe reach out to him and educate him on, you know.
What time is that?
And that is from four to seven P M, Mayor.
Okay, it's a big day.
And then the following week on Tuesday, June fourth, which will run through September seventeenth from two to seven P M, Fort Stillcom Park is, drum roll please, Farmer's Market. Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Farmer's Market. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Very good. Any questions of the city manager? There's lots of stuff going on the next couple of weeks. I'm just looking at the calendar here. Uh, yeah, lots of stuff going on. Okay, well, let's turn to council comments. Um, Mr. Bokey. Mr. Branstad.
Well, I um you know, I'm glad to be back. I I I gotta recall, and and I got it was restful and 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 I I can say to be able to go and do that. So I'm looking forward to uh, to to doing that and uh, looking forward to uh uh, the the Arlington Project to uh unveiling again this year to be able to go do that and in transitioning into Memorial Day.
Mr. Pearson.
I went to Community and Schools Annual Breakfast and that was um a good, good event. Um, you know, they're always pull your heartstrings with the pictures and videos of the kids and stuff. So they do a good job um raising money and and it was a, it was a good event. It would have been nice if it was a bit earlier in the morning um for us working folks, but um nonetheless, good event. And then I look forward to participating in the youth summit. Um, the speed dating interviews, that should be fun. So I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Lorsella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to start out with uh just showing some some gratitude for how we kicked off the meeting uh with uh the E F N presentation. They do great things in our community, so we're we're lucky to have them here. Uh, and then also to uh to Ellie, uh, thank you for your contributions to the uh to the Liquid's Promise. Uh, and we have some big shoes to fill uh on that board. So thank you for everything you've done for our community. Uh, and last thing, uh, on Saturday, I went to the youth fishing event uh on American Lake and saw lots of kids catching their first fish and uh getting to go home with a fishing rod. And uh, they were, they were having a good time, so it was. they were having a good time. So it was a well-done event for the city. Thank you.
So you're hooked on that event. Good. All right, very good. Yeah, almost. Yeah, I'm back. Yeah. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say uh thank you to Mr. Caulfield for the update on the bridge because I think that I helped a a lot with the questions that we're going to receive. So thank you for that. I did attend the open house at J B L M on Saturday, the Heritage Hill. It was well attended. I was surprised. It was a lot of people, a lot of vendors and everybody was having a good time. So a lot of the local areas, small businesses had the, had a booth there. So that was really nice. Crumble Cookies was there. Uh, and I do attend, plan to attend the memorial service and the Clover Park High School Arlington Project. It's always a nice event and we appreciate the students, the things that they do, the Youth Summit. And uh, as for the first of June, when we have the uh car show and jazz in the park, LMCC will have our booths. So that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Um, I've got a number of of thoughts or comments here, but I'm going to try to keep it pretty short. First is thanks for the the overviews tonight, certainly on the Interlock and Bridge. I think that really helps the community understand uh where we are with the project and the ongoing maintenance that we continue to do. So thank you for that, Mr. Caulfield. Uh, on the the budget, again, I just want to reiterate my compliments to Ms. Kraus and her finance team on the additional continuing accolades they get on financial budgeting and transparency. I think it's fantastic. It's one of our primary goals as council members is to, you know, to uh have a a budget that meets our particular council goals and one that has full transparency and is balanced. And we do that, I think, in spades. Um, again, Ellie, good to see you. Thank you. And the E F N proclamation was certainly well deserved. My big accomplishment, if you want to call it that, was getting back uh after a twenty three or whatever hour flight from southern China uh with uh Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, and and Greg Grimley, our Communications Director. As you know, we went on uh the uh Sister City invitation at the behest of Donzhou, uh, which is within the province of Hainan, which is off the mainland of China on the island there. And it was uh in some fascinating. They treated us incredibly well and very hospitable. I won't go into excruciating detail tonight because I've I've tasked uh Ms. Grimley and and Ms. Newton and myself to get together a kind of a photo montage to give a mini study session. Fifteen minute or for you folks, you really get the depth of what we observed. But we basically, after we got to Hong Kong, we flew quickly to the city of Haiko, stayed the first night in Haiko. I had lots of uh opportunities to view the incredible infrastructure, public spaces. We talked about parks. They have beautiful public spaces that they've created in the last five or seven years along the waterfront areas. So from Haiko and its beautiful historic center, uh, we went to Danjo, uh, had a wonderful meeting with the mayor, uh, dinner with the mayor and uh his staff and uh certainly were treated to all sorts sorts of cultural significant places and spaces uh for them, uh, including uh Hainan University there in Donzhou, where we met with the president of the university and they took us through uh much of their work with students there. It's an agricultural center, kind of like W S U in a sense. And they're doing all sorts of interesting work. We went to a huge multi-thousand hectare farm that uh was purchased by a private couple that made their money in capitalism, no doubt, and brought back uh the fruits of their labor to assist the farmers in the area create really state-of-the-art farming practices for crops. And it's now a center for agritourism in that area. It's fascinating. And then we, of course, spent a lot of time learning about their free trade port and development activities, which will generate uh tons of economic activity in the area. From our two days in Donzhou, then we went to Sonya on the bullet train so we could experience that. Enjoyed uh the southern city of Sonya, which again is somewhat of a resort uh city of over a million. Uh, but again, beautiful public spaces and uh, you know, we talk about our green loop. They have got a great example of a linear park that circumscribes portions of the city that would be great to get some information back to you about. So it was a good trip. It was a long trip. They were very gracious. They would love to come visit us. Perhaps in twenty twenty five, don't know yet, but uh we will send some thank you letters as they start this week or early next to make sure that they know that we very much appreciated their hospitality. It was a really, really well-done uh event. So in terms of this week, I will be doing the Coffee House on, I think it's Wednesday evening, Tuesday is tomorrow evening, right? Tomorrow evening, uh, I'll go to the uh the other two events. Brianna, my mind is escaping me, but the Arlington event. And then the the, of course, the Student uh Youth Summit. And then I think I'm scheduled to speak at the May twenty seven Memorial Day event. So just make sure that those are on the calendar. I just want to comment briefly in the public comments on the tip, uh, especially those pertaining to the Interlock Bridge and and Mount Tacoma Drive. This really is our opportunity to get that right. We know for the tip that it's scheduled for design in twenty five, construction twenty six. But uh there were, you know, good public comments, brief as they were tonight, but it makes uh the importance of that project real for the residents who are traversing that particular road. So that is really all I have for tonight, except all the events that are coming up. There is also the State Track Meet at Mount Tacoma High School, not in Lakewood, but adjacent to Lakewood. And I will be pleased to attend to observe a particular young student who qualified in two events at the State Track Meet. So Thursday evening and Saturday around two. So she got her personal record in the mile and in the thirty two hundred. So she's well-qualified for the state meet. Anyway, that's all I've got to say, unless there are any further alibis for the good of the